We'll call the special meeting to order about police staffing. Order, prayer, Mrs. Councilwoman Tadashor.
Dear Lord, please give this council the wisdom to make decisions for the betterment of the borough. Please protect our servicemen and women, our senior citizens and our children. We assist in your, in Christ our Lord, amen. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Vicente, roll call, please.
Ms. Donahue, Rose, Patterson.
Here.
Vice President Reed.
Here.
Tadashor.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
President Stewart.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
I do apologize everybody's patience as we get started a little late. Prior to this meeting, we were in executive session and it was a very productive executive session. We had the opportunity to interview some candidates for the full-time patrol officer position. We also reviewed the purpose and the policy for what will be the newly formed K-9 unit with the Borough Betty Stone Police Department. We had the opportunity to interview two candidates that had volunteered to be handlers for the K-9 unit. And we also had some discussion regarding the position of the Chief of Police. So I do appreciate everybody's patience as we are getting started a little bit later than normal. Anthony, as I explained to you, is we're going to take the action items first, then public forum will be at the end. So I appreciate your patience as we go through the very short agenda that we do have.
Thank you.
Patrol Officer Position. At this time, I'd like council to make a motion to provide a conditional offer of employment to one of the three full-time patrol officers that we interviewed here this evening.
Yes, Mr. President, I'll make that motion. I'd like to nominate Shane Coyle to our full-time position.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Shane Coyle to be provided a conditional offer of employment as a full-time patrol officer with the Borough Betty Stone. Mr. Vicente, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gross?
Yes.
I'll make the second. Reed?
Yes.
Tadashor made the motion. Thompson?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Yes.
Seven oh.
Second item on the agenda is we did have the opportunity to interview the two candidates that have come forward that would have an interest in being the K-9 handler for our K-9 unit. Counsel, I'd like to entertain a motion to select a handler for the K-9 unit.
Make the motion to select William Elliott as our K-9 unit handler.
Have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Vicente.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Second to the motion. Ms. Gross?
Yes.
Patterson? Vice President Reed?
Yes.
Tadashor?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson made the motion?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Yes.
Seven zero.
In regards to the position of the Chief of Police, at this time, I'd like to have council make a motion to officially declare the position of the Chief of Police vacant.
I'd like to say something on the record.
Absolutely.
Before, Mr. President. I will be participating in the vote tonight. However, I just want to state on the record that I feel like my hands are tied because I feel, you know, we should wait for litigation to finish up. And understanding that it could take awhile, but I would rather that the litigation ends and move forward then.
Just a very quick comment on that is I've had some discussions with our legal counsel as it pertains to labor issues. You know, as everybody is aware that these litigation issues sometimes take a very long time to come to a close. Borough Council has taken numerous actions over the last several months to make sure that we once again reestablish a fully staffed police department, which is the six patrol officers. We've gone through the process of interviewing and promoting to the ranks of Sergeant and to Lieutenant. And from a personal standpoint, I believe that it's important that we do have that rank in the police department, which would include not only the Sergeant and Lieutenant, but most importantly, the Chief of Police. So that once we get that rank structure in place, we would be able to charge the police department with performing the essential or the important functions that we have here in our community. So I do appreciate you going on the record with your opinion to hold off naming the Chief until after the litigation concludes. However, I will entertain a motion to declare the position of Chief of Police vacant.
I'll make the motion to declare the position of Chief of Police vacant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Vicente.
Ms. Donahue?
I abstain. Excuse me, I have an emergency.
Sure.
For the same, for the same reason until litigation is complete, I also get, it could take years, but it also might not.
Sean, just to get a clarification from a legal standpoint, I know that typically when you abstain from a vote, you're abstaining because you've got some type of personal conflict, such as a financial interest. And the reason why you are voting to abstain, in this particular case, I don't believe that Councilman Donahue has any type of personal conflict. Is the abstention vote acceptable, or does he have to vote yea or nay?
I believe if you don't have a conflict, you should vote yea or nay.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't aware of that.
He said the record will be changed, so.
A nay vote.
Okay. Councilperson Gross?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vice President Reed?
Yes.
Tadashor?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
President Stewart?
Yes.
President, the motion to declare the position of Chief of Police at Betty Stone vacant passes five to two.
Thank you, sir. With the position of the Chief of Police now being declared vacant, council will need to make a decision of whether or not we're going to promote from within our existing ranks, or whether we will be advertising for the position of the Chief of Police to outside candidates. I'll entertain a motion that we promote from within the ranks.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we promote within the ranks.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to promote from within the ranks. Mr. Vicente can have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Donahue, make the motion. Gross?
Second.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vice President Reed? Tadashor?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Yes.
Understanding that the officers that are coming in from the ranks all have civil service status at this present time, meaning that they went through a civil service process at the time of hiring, council will need to make a decision of whether or not we're going to bestow civil service status to the Chief of Police position. So if I could have a motion of whether or not we're going to bestow civil service status to the Chief's position.
I can imagine that would be for the civil service, would it please do?
Second.
I have a motion made and second. Do you know who you have for a second there, Mr. Vicente?
I recorded, Mr. Donahue. Just the timing function.
Was that alphabetical or just the timing you picked up the?
It's my ear.
I have a motion and a second that we're going to bestow civil service status on the candidate that would be put into this position as Chief of Police. Can I have a roll call vote on that, please?
Ms. Donahue, second and second. Gross?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vice President Reed?
Yes.
Tadashor?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Yes.
Motion carries, you know.
At this time, council, I will entertain a motion to nominate a candidate to the Civil Service Commission.
I make a nomination, a motion to nominate Ed Macheski for the Civil Service Commission for non, for a non-competitive interview.
I'll second that.
Just so that I can be clear with the motion, that's okay. Since we bestowed civil service status on the candidate, that candidate would be subjected to a non-competitive interview in front of the Civil Service Commission. And it'd be the Civil Services Commission responsibility, prior to the appointment of that candidate, to certify the candidate as being qualified for the position of Chief of Police. So I do have a motion with Mr. Patterson. I have a second with Ms. Tadashor, correct?
Correct.
May I have a roll call vote on the nomination of Ed Macheski to be the next Chief of Police for the Borough Betty Stone?
Ms. Donahue? Gross?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vice President Reed?
Yes.
Tadashor?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Yes.
The motion carries, six to one.
Congratulations, Chief Macheski, on your.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ed.
Thank you.
Any other action items in front of council this evening? With none being, we do have one public comment. Anthony Moroney?
Hi.
Then come to the podium.
Thank you very much.
Give us your name, your address, your occupations.
Yeah, okay, well, I have, let's just have a slight problem with a deciduous tree in the schoolyard closest to 10th Street. I've witnessed a branch a few weekends ago fall down that would have probably taken out about fifteen or twenty children. And I think the tree has extended its life, and I believe that it should be completely removed from the schoolyard due to the fact that it's a safety issue. I love trees, and I'm sure everyone in this room loves trees, but this is, it's a bad news. It's a bad news tree. I think it's got a lot of problems, maybe black ants, because that's what I think that was the disease, a deciduous tree. And the one limb is actually hanging over the swing set, and I'm very concerned about that. And also the aluminum horse that's protruding, that children are breaking their arms, and I think that that's out of code, out of date. And it might look beautiful, and people might respect it because it's been there for so long, but it's a safety issue.
You talking about the double gym horse?
I mean, there's children, the kindergartners, I mean, maybe perhaps not kindergarten, the first graders and second graders playing and climbing up there at the top. And I know some children are capable of climbing like that, and then other children follow suit, which are not capable of doing it. And I believe that someone, eventually, it's going to be a fatal issue between the tree and the horse.
Just in full disclosure, Anthony's actually a part-time employee with the Highway Department for the Borough Betty Stone.
Yes, sir.
We've had an opportunity, you've brought the situation forward to your supervisor, Gene Scott, who has discussed it at length with me personally. The tree that is in question, we believe is the property of the Ridley School District. It is on the school district grounds.
Yes.
So what I'll be doing this week is actually getting in touch with the principal, Jeff Dorazio. We will take a look at the tree. The school district has, under contract, tree surgeons and, you know, folks that would do that type of clearing work for them, understanding that school is getting ready to start here in the next two weeks. So we're going before Labor Day, correct?
I don't know if they start.
I think it's the 25th, actually.
Twenty-fifth, so, 26.
Twenty-sixth.
Boy, mine's in college, so. With that being said, it's, you know, we understand that you're concerned. We will, you know, make sure that the principal, Jeff Dorazio, acts quickly. If it is deemed a safety issue, it's something that will definitely be taken care of. In terms of the horse, I believe the horse is part of, and we were working on the websites, Nancy Scott Cowan Park is where the horse is located. I believe that is our horse, correct?
Did they say horse or the monkey horse?
The horse.
There's a horse, there's a, I called it dinosaur. I looked like a dinosaur in the.
It is a dinosaur, that's right, isn't it?
You know, so it's something that.
Even Bob Donahue said it, remembers it as a teenager.
Yeah.
Come on.
That's when there was dirt roads, right, Bob?
I guess the best course of action is I'm going to reach out to someone who specializes in playgrounds.
Right.
If it is something that's themed by an expert from playgrounds, it's being a safety hazard, we'll take, we'll make provisions to have it removed.
I very much appreciate it. If I can be a part.
Certainly, you know, come back the next council meeting, and hopefully we'll have good news that we've addressed both the trees, as well as the horse or dinosaur.
Right. Okay, excellent, thank you very much for hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for looking after.
Any other comments from the public prior to me calling for?
I can control what goes on outside of the school, I can not control what goes on inside of the school.
I hear you, Anthony.
If there's any kind of bullying and stuff like that, it won't come to me, but if I can help the kids with what's going on outside, I'll do the best I can.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Anthony.
Roundtable discussion, I'll start with my right with Councilwoman Thompson. Okay, I'll go to my left.
Thank you.
I'll go to my left with council. I'm sorry to be picking on you the entire night, because everything was going to the left with Bob Donahue, so. You were the first up on the roll call votes, and you were the first one to ask questions in the interview vote, so we'll let you be the first one to give roundtable discussion. Councilwoman Thompson, Ms. Donahue.
First, I want to congratulate you, Ed. Thank you for the motion. And Elliott, and the other patrol officer.
Cool.
Cool, yeah. And I'm glad we got the police force full staff like we said we were going to do in the beginning of the year. And Ed, for all your two years of being a. That's it.
Councilwoman Gross?
I concur everything. Congratulations to our new family members of the police force, and to Ed, after congratulations. And that's just about it.
Councilwoman Patterson?
Same thing. Congratulations, Ed. Congratulations to Elliott, Coyle. I also, I know that we talked, and I wanted to bring it up in other meetings, but what I'd like to do is try and see if we can get something in place to keep rubbish, recycling, things like that nature out of our town, like the overlay. Like a trash company coming in, and like Camden Iron, a metal company, was going to come in, they were recycling. You know, they didn't come in, and I'd like to put something in law and writing that we don't want that business in our.
Actually, Dave, I think we looked into that when all that was transpiring, and because, unless you change the zoning down on 291, that's already zoned heavy industrial.
Yeah.
I don't think you can stop anybody. I mean, you can, you can fight, you can fight, and like everyone did for Camden Iron. But as far as, unless you change it, I guess, can we change the ordinance, zoning that something different? Can we?
Dave, what I can do is I can reach out to John F. X. Riley, who is our solicitor for zoning issues.
Okay.
I'll give him a call on Tuesday or Wednesday this week, just to kind of brief him on what your concern is, and see, you know, what recourse we have in terms of anything we can do with our codes or ordinances to how difficult it would be to tweak the zoning in that area.
Yeah, it's terrible, I know where you're coming from. We don't want that.
Excuse me, Dave, are you talking about just transportation down 291, like to an incinerator or something? Are you talking about businesses setting up in the community?
Yeah, I don't want an incinerator in town.
Okay, good.
I don't want the rubbish, or. It's just not good for the children, and, you know, we have enough things going on, so. Yeah, it's just something I would.
A zoning overlay would allow you to determine what heavy industry means in a heavy zone. So you may not be able to change the actual zoning of the land, but you can define the type of heavy industry that you would excel on that land, and that would just be a simple zoning overlay.
Right.
Obviously, I would defer to the legal counsel on that, but that is certainly my understanding of it.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave, I'll have a, I'll have a report back for you from John F. X. Riley for our next meeting, so I'll have something to report for the 8th of September.
That'd be great, thank you.
Vice President Reed?
I'd just like to congratulate Ed and the other Elliott and Mr. Coyle. Now, with Elliott in that position, does that mean that we'll get a new drug task force?
We can recommend another person go to CID drug task force. I'll start working on that right away. I've got people in mind already.
You do have public views on it.
Councilwoman Tadashor?
I also want to congratulate you, Ed, for being chief, done a good job the last two years, and I know you're going to continue to do a good job. And I'd like to congratulate Elliott and Coyle as well. And the only other thing I have is, not the outside of the school, but inside the school, when you meet with Jeff, do you think we could set up a meeting with Jeff and maybe Leanne Wenzel, and any member of council who is interested in helping the kids at the elementary school do better than we're doing? Suggesting like a homework clinic, an after-school club, that, you know, maybe we could, you know, sponsor, maybe get some high school seniors to volunteer. But we need to help the kids do better. And, you know, if the parents can't do it, we have to help them. We have to help our school improve.
Do you think maybe they could do something, like you know how you have to go for like internships and whatnot? Like if you're a, if you're going to school for teaching?
Yes.
Could you do that as an intern, like as an internship?
Well, we could look into that, maybe we could ask Leanne to, you know, reach out to her.
I'll go, I'll go get up Leanne, I'll go with you if you want.
Okay, well, I'm asking Jeff to, you know.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Jeff.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Dorazio.
Mr. Dorazio.
Should be, should be a little more formal.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilwoman Thompson?
Congratulations, Ed, sure you did a great job, same as you have been doing. Congratulations also to Shane Coyle and William Elliott, I'm sure everyone will do a good job. I did want to mention something. I had sent Councilman Stewart an email earlier, and I'm just really just mentioning it in case it comes up in the future. I had sent an email in regards to an email that Councilman Stewart sent, questioning whether or not it was a violation of the sunshine law. Mr. Duffy did provide me with some case law, which I will be reading and follow up on that.
Okay.
And that was in regards to the Chief of Police position.
I've not seen the case law yet.
No, it's fine. I've got one for everybody.
Terrific, thank you.
Basically, exceptions in sunshine or litigation in personnel, right?
Yes.
Two with the primary exceptions. This one just says that you, this was a case that was appointment, it's.
You got one in your.
Warning call versus Board of School Directors, somewhere in Lehigh County, but it's the Commonwealth Court, which is one of the court, one of the courts of appeal in the state. And it just says basically that you can discuss an executive session, you can have straw votes in executive session, and the straw vote is like a practice, just seeing where everybody lies.
Mm-hmm.
And it basically says that you can use executive session to privately interview candidates, eliminate candidates, basically, as long as the final action of appointment of whoever the position is, is in sunshine, everything else is acceptable. So that's where we are. Everybody got one?
Yes. Just, you know, as a short response to your email, and I do appreciate your email, and I, you know, I appreciate, we are not politicians by profession, you know, the stipend that we are paid is minimal for the amount of work that we put in as council members. However, you know, we are charged with the responsibility as being members of council that we continue to govern in the best interest of our community. In regards to the email that I had sent, it is, was important to myself, I believe that it was important to the members of council here, and I believe that it's an important decision for the community that we establish the rank in the police department, and, you know, with the summer schedule being abbreviated to where we do not have that workshop meeting, to where we've got the opportunity to, you know, have these discussions, you know, the email that I sent was, you know, not to be any strong arms for people to provide votes, it was to, let's move forward and make sure that we've got our positions filled. Ed, Chief Macheski, I'll have to make arrangements with you and the Civil Service Commission to do a non-competitive interview. That letter will be written prior to our next council meeting.
Okay.
So with the vote that's being taken this evening, please be prepared to be sworn into the position on the 8th of September. Is that the correct date, Monday, the 8th?
Yes.
In addition to you being sworn in as the Chief of Police, we are also going to be taking action on swearing in the three police officers that we've made conditional offers of employment to. Patrol Officer, Patrol Officer Glean, have you received his medical and psychological clearances as of yet?
I have not yet, but I expect any day.
How about with Mr. Golden?
Mr. Golden just took his, like, last night, and I expect his results for the end of this week.
And you will make the arrangements for a psychological and medical evaluation for Shane Coyle as well. If we can get that done this week, that will assure that we've got all of the results back before our council meeting of the 8th of September.
Show me a problem.
We do have a Civil Service Commission that is scheduled, or will be advertised, at 5:30 PM on Monday, the 8th of September, which is immediately prior to the council meeting. It'll be the Civil Services Responsibility to review all of the medical clearances, all of the psychological clearances, as well as to make sure that we write the letter certifying you as qualified for the position of Chief of Police. So that information would be presented to council, that when we go into sunshine at 7 o'clock on the 8th, that information would be available. And because of the volume of folks that we will be swearing in, we may not have the capacity in this room. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we change venue.
Make a motion to change venue to.
Oh, I can't make the motion, you have to make the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'm making a suggestion.
I take the motion to change the venue to Joe Hughes Hall.
Second.
For our meeting September.
Motion made and seconded to change the venue for our September 8th meeting from the Borough Council chambers here at 1300 East 12th Street, down to Joe Hughes Memorial Hall, which is located at 1112 East 7th Street, which doesn't come up on your GPS, Barbara. You just get the 7th Street, make a right.
It's a new fire gas pump.
Councilman Stewart, I was here. President Stewart, do we have information regarding the new salary for the Chief? Will that be shared with us prior to the swearing in?
Yeah.
I just wanted to know what the employment, you know, this contract, if I'm getting a contract that this time or.
Tim, you'll advertise, we need to take action on the change of venue, correct?
Yeah.
So I have a motion and a second for the change of venue down to Joe Hughes Memorial Hall for our meeting, scheduled the 8th of September 2014. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And to address your concern, you know, now that third candidate has been named, I believe that Acting, or Acting Chief Macheski is going to be going to the FOP 27, seeking legal counsel. We have also, as Borough Council, have reached out to our labor attorney, McNichol, and they will be communicating over the next week and a half, so that we would be able to get some type of policy or agreement in place, so that not only is the salary addressed, but we'd also be addressing issues such as workdays, you know, is this a Monday through Friday position, or is this a position where we're going to ask the Chief of Police to work on weekends? Is this a position where it's eight to four? Or is this a position where we're going to be asking the Chief of Police to work a flexible schedule? Also to, you know, make sure that we define issues such as what kind of compensatory time is the Chief of Police entitled to? And is there any overtime associated with the position? So hopefully these, I'm sure that these things will all be addressed prior to the appointment on the 8th of September.
I was also going to ask, and I'm not sure because I don't know salaries, you know, you might be able to, I don't know what the lieutenant makes versus the chief.
Actually, the Chief of Police only has to make, by law, only has to make $1 more than what the lieutenant makes. But I believe our buffer is a few thousand.
Okay. I was just curious.
But legally, legally, it only has to be $1 more.
Tim, you can get a chart together.
Yes.
Okay. You can just get a chart together and send it to council.[1772.32]
Which will have all existing positions minus the.
Because I'll need to get a verification from you when I send a conditional or offer employment after Coyle. Any other business in front of council? I forgot, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Congratulations, Ed, a couple things. We can answer you on Mr. Dorazio. Mrs. Garcia also mentioned to me, I was trying to get hold of Mr. Dorazio about three other trees in the school park over by the trailers.
Okay.
They were up there very high, and they were actually branching out over top of the houses or the apartments on Simpson Street. And they looked in very bad shape. Number two, Jim Connor from St. James.
Thank you for reminding me about that.
Okay, you take care, I didn't know what I'm talking about.
Yes, but you can, you can, you can share with all of council, so if they are able to give me.
She contacted me today, there was a letter that Mr. Stewart sent, or an email inviting everybody out to a appreciation date day on.
31st of August.
31st of August. Right. He needs a head count on who's going, because they're going to be.
It's Labor Day weekend, right?
Labor Day weekend.
That's a Sunday.
31st is a Sunday, yes. I believe I sent an email out to all of council just to pass along the invite.
Okay.
Also asked for an RSVP. They are being gracious enough that if you would like to bring an espouse or a friend, you can, you can bring a guest.
He would need, he needs a count by December.
26th, he told me he needs a count.
He told me tomorrow, call me tonight.
He called me this morning. He called me this morning.
Same here.
You can put me down.
We can adjourn and then give me the head count. The folks in the meeting.
Make the motion to adjourn.
I need to open the floor to our, to the Chief Macheski.
I would like to say thank you for permission to Chief Police and to take the non-competitive